Are you sure?
Well, that's what this phone is saying.
Clock on the wall. Not just messing with you. All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. And we will begin with a roll call vote.
Okay. Alda Woman West. Alda Woman Tatman.
Yes, here.
Alda Woman Reed. Alda McCarroll. Alda Man Thomas.
Present.
Alda Man Christian. Alda Woman Dales.
Present.
Alda Woman Avant Elliott.
Present.
And then I see Mayor Pearson, City Clerk, City Attorney Dorothy White Coleman, Treasurer Howard, are you here? Mayor, we have one, two, three. For present, Alda Man and for absent. Oh, wait a minute. There we go. They're connecting now, so just a second. Alda McCarroll. Can you hear me yet? They're muted. They just muted themselves. Okay, Alda McCarroll and Alda Woman West, we're calling roll. But you're muted. I can't hear you.
Were you calling Alda Woman Reed again?
I will. Is she on? Alda Woman Reed.
I think I was muted. Sorry, Fran.
That's okay. I got you now. Alda Man Christian.
Here.
Alda Woman West. Alda McCarroll. I don't. Can someone? Well, they're muted, so I can't hear them talk.
Apparently, they can't hear us either. They're not responding in any kind of way. Alda Woman West and Carol. Can you all hear us?
Maybe if someone put something in the chat, they'll have them know if they need to unmute.
I mean, they're on, but I mean, they can't hear us, so I don't know how they participate without. Without hearing.
Put something in chat to notify them. They might need those.
Okay.
Chat.
All right.
Madam Clerk, did you want to note?
Oh, is someone typing that? Women, Alda McCarroll, unmute, please. Someone typed it to her.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you. I just had the, I'm sorry. It's Ma'am Barbara. Yeah, we just had the audio turned down. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. We were calling roll, so if you can answer present, Alda Man.
Alda Man Dallas, present.
Barbara West, present.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Mayor, everyone's here. Treasurer Howard, did he come in? Okay.
So is there a motion to approve the agenda? I mean, don't everybody speak at the same time. Is there a motion to approve? I can't speak up. I can't hear you.
I raised my hand. To approve the agenda. Would you like for me to proceed, Mayor?
Yes, I don't see your hand raised, but anyway, go ahead. Oh, yeah. Go right ahead, please.
I make a, I make a motion to approve the agenda, to approve of over 500 invoices and for the. I don't have the. To approve the agenda for today, or I think this is the 17th of September.
Alda Woman Tatman.
I second.
The move and proper second that we would approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, as may.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I was, I was listening for the question.
What's, what's your question?
We have a duplication of the resolution and the bill number that is exactly the same content. So I was just wondering from the attorney, why would we be approving both? And if one can come off, because we actually only voted for the over 500s to be on here. So can one of those come off? They are exactly the same language. So is there a purpose for both, Attorney White Coleman?
Well, I can speak to that.
Okay.
We were advised to pass them both. We may not need them both. But it's better to pass them both and pass the wrong one and need the other. And then we have to come back and get it passed. They could be the same, yes.
Okay, so one of them is more legal than the other. So the resolution has more flexibility than the ordinance. We'll be amending something for the ordinance, so. So that's why I was asking for the clarification from the attorney, Attorney White Coleman. Is she there? Is she on mute?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yeah. Well, an ordinance, of course, is a legislative act.
Excuse me, please. Attorney White Coleman, your voice is very faint.
Okay.
You sound far away.
Is that better?
Not really. Go ahead and talk.
The ordinance, of course, is a legislative act. Whereas a resolution is not. My understanding from the mayor is that they were not exactly sure which one would be required. So the board is passing both of them.
Okay.
We will only send one in, but if for some reason they need the other, we will have it already passed.
Okay.
Send it in. All right. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor, I mean, let's call a roll on this one.
Alda Woman West.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on? I haven't heard a motion.
I haven't seen. Approve the agenda from Elise. She didn't put it in the chat.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Alda Woman West. Alda Woman Tatman.
Yeah.
Alda Woman Reed. Alda McCarroll.
Yes.
Alda Man Thomas.
Yeah.
Alda Man Christian.
Yes.
Alda Woman Dales.
Yes, and I'm putting it in the chat.
Okay, Alda Woman Avant Elliott.
Yes, but she didn't answer. She just said she was putting it in the chat, so you didn't get a vote from Alda Woman Dales.
Well, I thought I heard her say, yes, and I'm putting it in the chat, but Alda Woman Dales.
I'll say it again, yes, and I'm putting it in the chat.
Okay, Alda Woman West, did you answer? Because I couldn't hear you. You guys are muted. Okay. Oh, yes, Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Then, so the approval of invoices over 500. And then more, I need a motion, please.
You have Alda Woman Diana Tatman's hand raised first and Teresa Reed second.
No, I'm sorry. My hearing was raised before Alda Woman Reed can go ahead.
Alda Woman Reed.
I'd like to make a motion. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I would like to, I know my internet is going in and out, so I would like to motion to pay bills over 500. There are 10 of them for a total of $47,355.18. Removing check number 43016 and the amount of $2,128.98 for the lack of supporting documents received.
Is there a second? Alda Woman Elliott.
Second.
I've been moved and probably second that will pay the bill over 500. Are there any further discussion? Not, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Alda Woman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Alda Woman Dales.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Alda Man Christian.
What was the one we're moving?
43016.
Alda Christian, can you hear us?
I vote no.
Okay, Alda Man Thomas.
Yes.
Alda McCarroll.
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alda Woman Tatman.
Well.
And Alda Woman West.
No.
You have six yes and two no's, Mayor.
All right, the motion passes. Resolutions. Alda Woman for funding CARES Act funding, Alda Woman Tatman.
Yes, sir. I would like to read resolution number 2020-6. A resolution requesting that the St. Louis County distribute $47 million of CARES Act funds on a per capita basis to the municipalities within the county to be used for the eligible expenses authorizing the mayor of the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri to accept CARES Act funding and execute a municipality relief program, funding agreement and confirming agreement to identify and hold harmless St. Louis counties from such distribution. It reads the stuff, whereas the United States Congress enacted the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, providing a $2 trillion economic relief package to provide assistance for American workers, families and small businesses, to provide assistance and state and local governments and to reserve jobs for American industries. And whereas the state of Missouri received 1.9 billion from the CARES Act, a portion of which was subsequently distributed and their parts to Missouri counties proportionally based on population, except those counties that receive a direct payment under the CARES Act, along with a recommendation from the governor, the counties that receive funds directly from the state of Missouri, in turn distribute CARES Act funds to local governments located within their jurisdictions. And whereas the U.S. Department of Treasury distributed funds from the CARES Act proportionally based on 2019 census data directly to certain local governments, including cities and counties with a population greater than 500,000 interstate governments. And whereas based on St. Louis County's population, which includes the residents of municipalities located in the county, the county received $173.5 billion directly from the United States Treasury designated to cover necessary expenses incurred due to the public health emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, excuse me, the U.S. Department of Treasury has issued eligibility, I'm sorry, title, eligibility guidelines for use of the CARES Act funds, which include in part that payroll expenses for public safety may be presumed to be caused with service substantially dedicated to mitigation or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency fund. And after the effective date of the CARES Act, from March 27, 2020 through December 30, 2020, the eligibility period. And whereas the county executives have allocated $47 million for distribution to municipalities to use for eligible expenses. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Alder Persons of the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri as follows. Number one, the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri hereby request a per capita distribution of the above referenced $47 million allocated by the St. Louis County for municipal public safety expenses. Number two, the mayor of the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri is hereby authorized to accept Coronavirus, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, funding from the execute of municipality relief program, funding agreement with St. Louis County, Missouri, for and on behalf of the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri. Number three, upon receipt of such funds and to the extent thereof, the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri agrees to identify the hold harmless to St. Louis County from and against any claims of misuse thereof and repay such funds or portion thereof immediately upon notice that the U.S. Treasury Department has made a final determination that the distribution or portion thereof was not lawfully pursuant to its above referenced guidelines or other ones. And that completes the reading of the four resolutions.
Alda Woman Dales.
I second her, I second her motion.
All right, has been moved and proper second. For the motion, are there any further discussion? Say no discussion, call a roll, Madam Clerk.
Alda Man Thomas. Thomas, you're muted. I'll go on till he unmutes himself. Alda Woman Dales.
Yes.
Alda Man Thomas.
Oh, yes.
Alda Man Christian.
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed.
Yes.
Alda Woman West.
Yes.
Alda Woman Tatman.
Yeah.
Alda Woman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
And Alda Man Carol.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Mayor.
All right, the motion passes. We move to 2596, Alda Man Thomas.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the first and second reading of Ordinance Bill number 2020-2596. An ordinance requesting that St. Louis County distribute $47 million of CARES Act funds on a per capita basis to the municipalities within the county to be used for eligible expenses, authorizing the mayor of the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri to accept CARES Act funding and execute a municipality relief program funding agreement and confirming agreement to indemnify and hold harmless St. Louis County from such distribution. Whereas the United States Congress enacted the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act.
I'm sorry, point of order.
Yeah.
He can just read by title. It's already been fully read through and it's posted online also, Alda Man Thomas.
Okay, all right, that's fine with me. That was the first reading.
Christian will second.
Moved and proper second, are there any further discussion? Roll. All right.
That's yays and nays and.
Second read.
Second read, an ordinance, Bill number 2020-25.
We hadn't voted.
Sorry, point of order. We have to do yays and nays and then.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, as may. As have it, second read.
Second reading, Bill number 2020-2596. An ordinance requesting that St. Louis County distribute $47 million dollars of CARES Act funds on a per capita basis to the municipalities within the county to be used for eligible expenses, authorizing the mayor of the city of Belle Fountains Neighbors, Missouri to accept CARES Act funding and execute a municipality relief program funding agreement and confirming agreement to indemnify and hold harmless St. Louis County from such distribution.
Alda Woman Dales.
I second that.
Moved and proper second, are there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Alda Woman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Alda Woman West. Alda Woman Tatman.
Yeah.
Alda Woman Dales.
Yes.
Alda Man Christian.
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed. Alda Woman Reed, I didn't hear.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Alda Man Thomas.
Yes.
Alda McCarroll.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Mayor, eight to zero.
All right, then.
Hallelujah.
Yeah.
The motion passes. I don't know who said hallelujah, but I concur.
Okay, so I need to do this.
I'm sorry.
Make a point.
I said I was about to do this little spiel, but I think Alda Woman Reed has something to say.
No, that was.
Oh, okay.
That was a resident. You probably should mute everybody.
Okay. The majority of the Board of Alder Men voted and passed with a vote of eight to zero. Bill number 2596, which will become Ordinance number 2589, if and when passed by the mayor, signed by the mayor, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you all for your good work tonight. Alda Woman Elliott, I see your hands up.
Yes, sir, that was just adjourned. Whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you all for your good work tonight. At this point, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Just me. Alda Woman West.
I thought Alda Woman Avant Elliott was gonna make that motion, and I was just getting ready to second it.
Well, she did.
I hadn't did it yet. I moved to adjourn a special board meeting at 7:22.
Is there a second? All right. Alda Woman West, Alda Man Carol.
Alda Man Carol, yeah, I second.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I don't know if you guys have gotten the Avalon tax rate stuff yet.
No, we have not received it yet. I was going to mention that, that we may just have to do a special meeting. We're still waiting on all the information from St. Louis County as well as from our auditor to prepare the papers. So it's gonna be a special meeting, because we haven't got everything yet.
Should we be? Right, should we go ahead and schedule something? Does a half an hour meet? Sorry. Huh?
I'm sorry.
Something for the 29th or the 30th? You have to have, I'm sorry. Should we schedule something tonight for the 29th or the 30th? Don't they have to be?
Yeah.
By the 30th, Fran?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so maybe we should just go ahead and see who's available for the 29th.
I believe it's October 2nd, but the 29th.
Or the 30th, okay, can, okay. I mean, I can go ahead and make that motion for us if everybody is available, if there's five people at least available to do that.
I would like to make a motion to rescind my motion to adjourn.
Adjournment's not debatable, it has to, or anything, it has to go right to a vote. Point of order, sorry.
Oh.
Okay, where are we in this process here? Because I was thinking.
I didn't want you to miss, yeah, I didn't want you to miss out, because we have to have that in, you know, for us to set a time, if, you know, we were, at least five of us is here to vote on that.
Okay.
But.
Well, that's.
If it's an adjournment, I mean, go ahead.
Well, you can, you can, you can rescind your, your, your motion to adjourn. And then we can proceed with some, with that motion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. The only other option that we can consider is just four of us calling the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Let's. Alda Woman West, Carol, I see your hand up.
Does the meeting adjourn, the number first? Okay, so I'm just gonna make a suggestion for the next meeting after this one. If, please give Fran permission to mute everybody until it's their turn to speak.
All right. Alda Woman Elliott.
Yes. Uh-uh, no, uh-uh, my hand's no, no longer up.
That's Dales' hand, Mayor.
Okay, what, okay, where are we?
Second to adjourn.
Okay, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, as may. All right, means adjourn. Do we go into a regular board meeting?
Mayor.
A mayor.
Mayor, I have a, I have a family emergency, so I'm sorry, I won't be able to attend the town hall meeting. Can you hear me? Because my internet is kind of messing up today.
Yeah. I'm only hearing parts of what you're saying.
Right. I know my internet.
You have an emergency and you, you need to break off at some point, right?
Yes, my little sister, yeah. Okay, thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
I concur. I think, because there's a lot of background noise, if we can mute everyone, please, until their turn to speak, because there's a lot of background noise.
Mayor.
Yes.
Did you hear that request?
I'm sorry.
Mute anybody until they, until they call on to speak, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I should have addressed that to you. I'm sorry, yes, sir.
That's fine, could you do that? Because I'm hearing, I'm hearing babies and.
Yeah.
Okay.
How about? We have about two minutes and we'll start a regular meeting.
So what I don't understand is I press mute all, and you still talk.
That's because I'm a part of the whole. That's because I'm a part of the whole.
Okay. Oh, boy. Okay, well, I'm gonna step away for a minute. We got two minutes before seven thirty, mayor.
We got one minute.
Oh, okay, one minute.
Alright, it's, uh, it is now seven thirty. And, uh, we were prepared to start our town hall meeting. Uh, let me welcome everybody on tonight. It is good to see, uh, all of you. Uh, our, some of our other elected officials who are here tonight. Thank you for accepting our invitation and coming to share with us tonight. Uh, and so at this point, at this point, we will call the meeting to order. And I was looking for a flag, we got pledge of allegiance on here. And so I was trying to scroll to a flag. Anybody got a flag on their phone?
There's a flag behind Miranda's Alderwoman Avon Elliott's head, there it is.
Yes, there it is. So let's do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation. And justice for all.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, now we will, uh, we will, uh, turn this, uh.
I have everybody.
We will turn this over to the, uh, the, uh, attorney Coleman, what, uh, would be, uh, uh, mistress of ceremony. Attorney White Coleman. Attorney Coleman.
No, it doesn't show that she's muted. Attorney White Coleman, can you hear us? Listen. It's showing that her video is off, but not muted.
But we don't, uh, what I'm wondering is she can hear us? Uh, well, I'm sure hoping that we could have had an in-person meeting tonight. But, uh, these times that we live in today just causes us to do things much differently. Attorney White Coleman. Yeah, come on. We, we barely can hear you.
Um, I'm not sure what is wrong, mayor.
If you can turn your, I learned yesterday, if you turn your computer, if you're on your computer all the way up to max, leave it on your phone.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be there now.
We hear you now.
We hear you now.
Alright.
And so you're on for, to introduce and to emcee the program.
Um, thank you, mayor. Um, I had not been informed of that.
You didn't get the, the, uh, agenda?
Uh, I have the agenda for the meeting, but I do not have the program agenda.
Oh, my goodness, it's, it was with that whole batch came out at the same time.
It's not with mine here, uh, but at any rate, uh, I can improvise. Give me just a second here. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We're pleased, pleased to have everyone with us this evening for our meeting and our town hall meeting. Uh, this is a very important meeting, uh, in that it's our opportunity to share, uh, the vision of the mayor and the board with the public. So we're delighted that everyone could be here this evening. Um, at this time, I believe, uh, I am to turn the program over to, um, Mayor Pearson.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I, I will, uh, read a short statement, uh, to you tonight. I've already extended welcome, but just let me share that this year has both, has been both challenging and rewarding. Uh, above all, it has been a learning experience working with elected officials, city employees, and the community. My vision for Belle Fountain Neighbors community remain one of prosperity. However, we must keep in mind that prosperity takes time, effort, and commitment. We must also remember to celebrate our milestones along the way as we journey into the future. During my first years, mayor, I was immediately faced with managing the flood from the Mississippi River, uh, that had the potential to endanger the lives and property of our community. We can diligently with the city's resources, county government, our residents, and other volunteers and donors, we were able to avert a disastrous situation. Now, in my second year, I am faced with managing the health of our community as a result of the global pandemic caused by COVID nineteen. Beyond health, certain members of our community have suffered other hardships, including unemployment. Steps have been taken to distribute food to those in need, provide COVID nineteen testing on city services in a manner that are COVID compliance to meet the needs of our residents. Your city government serves, services are still evolving during these changing times. And we seek to find new ways to improve business and relationships while minimizing health consequences. The Coronavirus Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, is a two-point-two trillion-dollar national economic stimulus package created in March twenty twenty. St. Louis County received one hundred and seventy-three million dollars to be distributed in part throughout the county based on each municipality's population. The city of Belle Fountain Neighbors is eligible to receive up to seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in CARES Act money from the county. And I'm pleased to announce to you tonight that the board has passed a resolution, uh, and the, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, that the city has required of us to, I mean, the county has required of us to do. So I thank the board for that and the community to need to thank the board as well. The deadline for twenty twenty census is September the thirtieth. Right now, our area response rate is about sixty-two to sixty-eight percent. Some populations historically have been or are at risk of being missed in the census at unreasonably high rate. We are largely an African-American community and African-Americans statewide goes, uh, the, uh, and African-Americans statewide go largely unreported on the census because of lack of participation. Please make sure you and your household are all counted in the census. More participation in the census mean more funds for the city to maintain and improve services over the next ten years. Therefore, every individual counts and is important in our final census number. The three sixty-seven and, and, uh, and, uh, and I two seventy, uh, project on that, uh, on that corner, Belle Fountain Neighbors has, uh, there sits one hundred and seventy-five acres of land, uh, virgin land in that area, which I have proposed to develop. Uh, with the coming of the zoo safari with Christian Hospital, you have the, the, uh, uh, veterans home on three sixty-seven and the, uh, record center, the national record center there. Uh, I propose to build a, in, in developing that land, a mini convention center, hotels, shops, restaurants, and, uh, and entertainment and other, uh, economic development, uh, on that spot. Perhaps moving city hall to that spot. City hall, the, our city hall is not conducive to serving our community today as it did in years past. So we have to do something. Also, our rec center, uh, needs a lot of attention. Uh, and so we're looking at that as well. And so I personally wanna thank the board, uh, appointees, uh, commissions, and, uh, and what have you, employees and community for their hard work and support of moving this city forward. The, uh, when my election was not the change that we sought, but it was the opportunity for change. And I challenge you not to allow that opportunity to pass. We have the potential in Belle Fountain Neighbors to be the jewel of North County. And I hope that we take advantage of it. So as I close, I share with, I say to you that hand in hand, together we can. Thank you.
Uh, mayor.
Yes.
This is the city clerk, because, um, the attorney can't locate her agenda.
Um, I, I have it, Fran.
You have it now, okay, I was about to ask, can we share the agenda on the screen?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
Uh, but thank you, mayor. Um, your words were quite profound and I'm sure we all share your vision for the city, uh, and look forward to working with you to implement it. Uh, the next person on the agenda is, uh, the city treasurer, Patrick Howard.
Um, excuse me, a minute, uh, attorney Dorothy White Coleman, can you, um, the introduction of the elected officials and department heads and stuff up there at that spot? You don't see it?
We, we can, uh, start with the, uh, introduction of the elected officials. Um, let's begin with, um, Alderwoman Reed.
It was excused, she had to leave.
So.
Thought you were.
Um, Alderwoman Dales, Alderwoman Elise Dales.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alderwoman Elise Dales, um, ward four. Thank you for coming to our town hall meeting.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Hello, I'm Dr. Miranda Von Elliott, Alderwoman of ward four, and I'm honored to serve as the president of the Alderman Board this week.
Thank you. Um, we will next go to. We'll go to ward three.
Do some people.
Um, Alderman Jim Christian.
Hello, thank you for everyone that's, uh, here tonight. And thank you for attending.
Uh, Alderman James W. Thomas Senior. I'm Alderman James W. Thomas Senior, like to welcome everyone. I'm the Alderman for ward, award three along with Alderman Jim Christian. Again, uh, make sure if you aren't registered to vote, register and make sure that you vote in November. Thank you.
Award one, Alderwoman Barbara West.
Thank you, this is Alderwoman West. I would like to thank everyone for attending. I would also like to encourage you to complete your census form because it is very important, uh, to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ward, um, one, Alderwoman Dinah Tatman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alderwoman Revan Dinah Tatman, and I serve as, um, Alderperson for ward one. And I would like to concur with my two colleagues to stress the importance of the census and voting. Both of those are advantageous for our community and we have the power to determine if we will be able to continue to thrive and enhance the services and economic development in our area. Thank you for coming to the citizen.
Thank you, um, ward two, uh, Alderman James Carroll.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for coming out tonight. My name's Alderman James Carroll and I, uh, represent ward two in the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors.
Um, thank you all. I believe we've covered, uh, all of the Alderpersons. Um, we also have with us tonight, uh, department heads and commission chairs, um, and elected officials, and as opposed to going through trying to introduce everyone, in the interest of time, uh, we will just proceed. I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
It's, it's okay, go ahead. It's okay, Attorney White Coleman.
Alright, thank you. Uh, the next person then on our agenda is city treasurer, Patrick Howard.
Hello, everyone. I'm city treasurer, Patrick Howard. Uh, just like to welcome everyone to the town hall, just as everyone did previously. Uh, as it relates to the office of finance and treasury, uh, I'd just like to mention that myself and partnership with the mayor are working, uh, very hard to make sure that we manage the finances, uh, as responsibly as possible to meet the needs of the community. Uh, so just so that everyone is aware of that and, uh, you know, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, treasurer Howard. Uh, next we have city collector, Kathy Broussard.
Kathy is excused today. Kathy is not here.
Thank you, Fran. We'll proceed right along then. Uh, we have our police chief next, Chief Jeremy Iowa.
Thank you, Attorney White Coleman. Apparently, according to the agenda, I've been bound to ten minutes. So I will try to keep within those restraints. Um, thank you for everybody attending this evening. Uh, this has always been my favorite meeting of the year. I know. I know it's usually a little bit more formal once in person, but nevertheless, the content is the most important. I'm going to start off with a little discussion about the COVID situation. Please continue to monitor information as, you know, put out by CDC, Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, and the St. Louis County Department of Health. Did some cursory research for kind of from March to the current day. Currently, as a county, female death rates are slightly higher than male, and the death rates of African Americans occur twice as much as white Americans and three times more than other racial American groups. Mixed racial groups are more likely than all other groups to test positive for COVID. The age groups with the highest impact of positive cases are ages twenty to twenty-nine and ages eighty to ninety-nine. However, ages eighty to ninety-nine have the highest death rate of all age groups combined. Since March, as a county, the highest death rate grouping was between mid-April to mid-May. And I took a look at not only, so the the information that I have available to me to analyze is based on zip code. All this information is based, as it comes from St. Louis County, I just kind of put it together in a fashion to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. So from I prepared this on the fifteenth, and it starts back in March, present day, it represents sixty-two zip codes within the St. Louis County area. So there's two categories, one's called cumulative COVID nineteen positive cases, and the second category is COVID nineteen positive cases per one hundred thousand population. So cumulatively, the number one area in the county is the six-three-zero-three-one Florissant area. Number two is the six-three-zero-three-three Blackjack area. Number three, the six-three-one-three-six Jennings. Our neighbors with Spanish Lake, it's six-three-one-three-eight are number fifteen, and we fall six-three-one-three-seven being Beth Fountain Neighbors, Glasgow and Riverview, fall at number eighteen on that list in the county. For the second category, per one hundred thousand population, the number one area was six-three-one-three-zero, excuse me, six-three-one-four-zero, being that the Kenlock area. Number two is six-three-one-three-seven. Number eight was six-three-one-three-eight, and number eleven is six-three-one-three-six. So hopefully, that kind of gives you an idea. This area is still kind of at the upper tier as it concerns cumulative positive cases. We're still on the upper end of the spectrum of impact from COVID. Since March, concerning only police department employees, we've had several employees tested over that period of time, and all test results have come back negative, which has been really Move on to the twelve-month crime report summary. So every year, I compare the last twelve months, September to August, to the previous September to August period. And so for this year, compared to the previous twelve months, we've seen a ten percent decrease in burglary, an eleven percent increase in larceny, and a twenty-three percent increase in motor vehicle theft. The last period, we saw a fifty-five percent increase in motor vehicle theft. So looking at that a little bit deeper, we are still experiencing the majority of stolen vehicles and theft are due to several factors. So vehicle theft, keys left in your car when it's undetended, that happens sixty-eight percent of all motor vehicle theft. Sixty percent of all stolen vehicles are from a driveway, and sixty-three percent of those vehicles had keys in the vehicle. The times you're most likely to have your vehicle stolen is between six AM and seven AM, and the second most likely time is at ten PM. You're at least likely to have your vehicle stolen on Wednesdays and Saturdays. So here's my professional advice, and we've talked about this before. Make it your daily routine to deter vehicle crimes, and don't be victimized. Don't leave your vehicle unattended with the keys ignition. When you're not using your vehicle, remove all the property from visibility, put it in your trunk, take it in your house, definitely remove all valuables, wallets, money, jewelry, and the like. Close all vehicles' windows, lock it up, set the alarm system if it has one, and at night, definitely use motion lights, proper exterior lighting has during dark hours has a tendency to deter opportunity for criminals to take advantage of you. And by all means, please encourage your neighbors to do the same. The second crime category I want to discuss is crimes against persons. Same comparison, this last twelve months, we've had seen, we haven't seen any change in our homicide rate. The last period and this period, we both have had four homicides. We've slain a slight uptick in rape. The previous period was three, this period has been four. That was twenty-five percent. There's been eighteen percent increase in robbery and a two percent decrease in assault. This category is the violent crime area. It's the violent crime area that I've talked about before. Most of these crimes are domestic in nature, where its friends, family, and associates. The attackers and the victims are known to each other. These are very hard to prevent, so I ask the public again, if you are recognizing domestic problems on your street with your neighbors, please report them to us. We have several different ways that we can intervene to hopefully deter violent crimes that involve family members, friends, and associates. Few more points of interest. We continue to maintain our accreditation for law enforcement as we have since two thousand and six. Our next audit will most likely be postponed due to COVID. COVID, we know, has already changed a lot of things and has bottlenecked a lot of different processes. Last several months, we have taken a hard-nose review at our policies regarding response to resistance, also known as use of force. We have three main policies that address these issues. So you have response to resistance incidents, response technique and weapons, and investigations of response to resistance incidents. More on the employee focus. Employee health and welfare is still at the top of my list. And the more we invest in our employees' health and welfare, the greater professional performance that we do get. Last year and as years pass, and this year, the city's had an EAP program available for the employees, which specifically for police officers, has been very, very helpful. I'll be presenting the board with a draft ordinance to approve an agreement for another EAP program for this upcoming cycle on Thursday, October first. I'm also working, going to work on reintegrating the Chaplain Program to a pre-COVID status. When COVID hit, we kind of went to bare bones minimum to reduce the chance of spread of COVID. Right-alongs have been approved quite some time ago, and I would like to start doing a little bit more with the Chaplains Program regarding the police officer specific. Recruiting, hiring, and diversity staffing over the last twelve months, we've had one police officer on military leave since January. That police officer's anticipated return is in the first quarter of next year. We've had four police officers separate employment since last August. One took five months to replace, another took six months to replace, and currently we have two vacancies. And I'm seeking to diversify the department by using the opportunity of paid police academy training. In the end, if approved by the board, the board has already approved interest in that. I do have some very promising candidates to look at, so I'm very excited about that. Problem solving in our community, we're still focusing on underlying causes of crime fear disorder. However, most importantly, the police department is promoting more community cooperation and identifying problems and solutions. As we've discussed before, it doesn't stop with the police in identifying problems and bringing solutions to problems. It's everybody's responsibility, police, city government, and residents like. Again, I'm encouraging those groups of people within our city who have a problem on their block or in their neighborhood, please contact us. We will be more than happy to set up a meeting with you to discuss your problems and find some solutions for you that will hopefully alleviate those problems. Emergency preparedness, we're still work with the fire department and other regional resources as needed using systems that we have in place at the at the national and local level, which is the National Incident Management System and the Instant Command System to maintain readiness for foreseeable and unforeseeable events. Most regional networking and resource sharing now, especially at the administrative level, is facilitated online. I do desire to work with the Public Safety Committee in the future to reestablish the CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team. Volunteers are also necessary as part of the community program when it concerns disasters and and safety. I would also like to work with the city in the coming months over the next year in kind of further refining the emergency operations plan we have. Have identified a few areas that could use some fine tuning and some upgrades. Those areas including fire and rescue resources, resource and supply, procurement procedures for emergency situations, and so forth. The city's website portal has an area for the police department that has information such as monthly crime reports and residential inventory and security education material. However, I would like to work with the city in the near future on possibly upgrading the city's website to a platform to we could enrich it with more information for our residents to look at when needed. The police department also understands that we have a we have a greater, we have a need to have a greater presence on social media and provide more information on safety and security, along with sharing police-related issues with the public, and we're going to work on that as well. Programs and services, again, COVID has an impact in what we do. But I'm very pleased that there's an Innovative Public Safety and Crime Prevention Summit that's coming up on October third that the police department is in great support of. I think it's going to be a good event for the public overall with a lot of sponsors and a lot of people involved. I'm working with the fire department to host a combined National Night Out Halloween drive-through event on Halloween. National Night Out this year, I'm finding that most cities are not doing the block parties because of COVID. We're arranging with the fire department to have a drive-through event, so we still have something to engage the public with. And the Backstopper's Barbecue has been canceled this year because of COVID as well. So we're working on some some other things to kind of get around the COVID, because as the mayor says, you know, city services are still evolving and kind of aligning themselves with the COVID issue, but being able to still engage the community. Motorist education, I know we have a motorist problem, not only in our community, but in widespread in the St. Louis area. In part, the police take participate in making our roadway safe, increasing the life of the quality in our community. We spend a lot of time addressing special requests, including traffic-related complaints. A lot of the patrol-level job is responding to those complaints of extra patrol, monitoring streets for speeders. We are working on ways to where we can better accommodate certain complaints, especially the traffic-related ones. I have some ideas that I will probably present to the board in the near future to try to tackle that problem and try to mitigate some of those issues. Technology, we have upgraded our network infrastructure with new servers and new computers. I have stretched the life of most of our electronics to the point where they're just no longer can be used, so a lot of those things have been upgraded. We also implemented body worn cameras last month. That's been a great tool so far. The officers are very excited about it and use them constantly. So don't be surprised if you call a police officer and he's wearing a camera in the middle of his chest. You're probably being recorded at that point. Finally, just to touch on financial management, you know, the city in general, including the police department, had had to take some cuts this year in anticipation of the loss in revenue to keep the city operating. Originally, there was a plan to replace the marked fleet over a period of a few years. I stretched the fleet a few extra years to save the city quite a bit of money. A few months back, we did purchase three new March vehicles and one administrative vehicle. This this fiscal year, we're not making any purchases. That's understandable. Other things that we had to reduce budget items to kind of align ourselves with the temporary economic circumstances, two police officer positions, aside from the ones I just mentioned, are still remaining vacant for this fiscal year, which is administrator and a detective slash community services officer. I talked about stopping the the turnover of the fleet because of the cost. We took a couple of the reductions, community services budget was lowered. We removed the traffic calming device monies from the police budget, and I'd just like the rest of the city employees, the police employees, to not receive any merit raises. So I do thank you for your time this evening, and I hope this information I provided to you has been helpful. This concludes my report. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Chief Haller. Next, we have the Image and Beautification Commission, Jenny Stewart.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Again, my name is Jenny Stewart, and I am the chairperson of the Image and Beautification Board, and there are eight of us on this particular board, and we're all volunteers. Some of us have been on this board for a number of years, and I would like to at this time recognize those people. Caroline McDonald, Andrew Fields, Leo Garden, I'm sorry, yes, Leo Garden, Lynn Garden, Rodney Wheaton, Shelley Davis, and Sharon Harris, and myself. Our main responsibility on the Image and Beautification Board is to assist the city and our image, in the image of the city, as well as beautification, which leads us to why I am. which leads us to why I am here tonight. I would like, on behalf of the Image and Beautification Board and the City of Belle Fountain, to recognize the 2020 Summer Beautification Award winners. And I will start with Ward 1. In Ward 1, we have Gary and Priscilla Hamm at 608 Gleason Drive, Regina Hayes at 9924 Collinade Meadow. In Ward 2, we have Karen and Melvin Brewer at 1008 Crete, excuse me, Kathleen Miller at 917 Elba Lane. In Ward 3, we have Dana Hollenshaw at 1516 Attica Drive, and Lorna McNeil at 10132 Dwight Drive. And in Ward 4, we have Brett Studdelfield at 1101 Chori Drive, and Brenda Codwell at 9477 Adler Avenue. We would like to congratulate these winners, and we thank you for keeping your property beautiful. We look forward to picking winners in 2021. But on behalf of the Image and Beautification Board, we would like to thank our 2020 winners at this time. You will be receiving a certificate of thanks. You will also have the photos of your homes hung in City Hall for persons to come and view your beautiful homes. Also, at this time, I would just like to invite the residents and friends and neighbors of Belle Fountain to our annual cleanup, which is going to be held this Saturday, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, which is September the 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. We will be cleaning up some of our streets, and we would like our neighbors and our residents to come out and help. You will be served snacks after the cleanup. We will start again at 9:00, and we will meet at the rec center. So if you're able, we would love to have you to help us pick up litter on our streets.
Thank you. Hey Jenny, can I add to that?
Yes.
If anyone's looking for the actual information, they can go to the police department's Facebook page, and the flyer and everything is on there if you can't remember all that information. So I just wanted to put that out there for you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Stewart, and congratulations to all of the winners for your good work. Next on our agenda, we have our city clerk, Fran Stevens.
Thank you, City Attorney Dorothy White Coleman. Hello, everybody. My name is Fran Stevens, and I'm the city clerk for Belle Fountain Neighbors and the office manager in the City Hall Administrative Department. My report tonight is about the functions of the team in the Administrative Department. So let me tell you, when COVID-19 pandemic became a reality, the City Hall doors were closed to the public. But we still reported to work, but on a relaxed basis. We went in to handle the mail, check emails, handle phone calls, and things of that nature. We returned to operate time this past June. So our office hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The team at City Hall is here to assist you with obtaining business license, building and occupancy permits, dog tags, complaints of tall grass and weeds, unsightly buildings, and, you know, things of that nature. We also have Notary Public there to assist you. And the Belle Fountain Neighbors Municipal Court Division is housed in the Administrative Department. So everyone feel free to call us for assistance or come to City Hall, but remember to wear your mask and practice social distancing. And if you're not certain who or what department you need, just ask for me. Okay, and close, and I'd like to announce that we do have a part-time administrative assistant position open. They will be assisting the prosecutor as well as helping out in other departments. So if you, you can view the entire job description on the website. That will be www.cityofbelle.com. Thank you. I didn't have much, Attorney Dorothy White Coleman.
Thank you so much, Fran, but you said a lot. Next on our agenda, we have Amy Mulholland for the Recreation Department. Amy?
I'm here. I was trying to start the video, but my computer won't let me. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming to the meeting tonight, and I want to let you know that the Recreation Center is open. Do not be afraid to come back. We are looking forward to seeing all of you. We closed on March 20th, on the day that the county executive issued the order that we had to close. And we reopened again on June 15th, the day that he said that we could reopen. Right now, we are at limited capacity. We're trying to make everything nice and safe for everybody. We are not renting our rooms really right now because we are still at 25% capacity. That means our largest room can only hold 12 people. And who wants to pay that kind of money for 12 people? We have our weight room open. Six people are allowed in the weight room at a time. The basketball is available during certain hours, but it's limited to two people per net, and they have to stay at their own nets. We have walking in the morning. Monday, Thursday, we open at 7:00. Friday, we open at 7:00 too, but Monday to Thursday, we're open from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening. Friday, we're open from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening. Saturday, we are open 9:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening. We are closed right now on Sundays because without room reservations, we're trying to cut back on our staff. One of the big highlights of the year has been the reopening of Bissell Hills Park. It finally reopened last fall. Unfortunately, again with the virus, we were not able to have any reservations or anything until June. Actually, we didn't start reservations until July because in June, it was still at 25% capacity. But Bissell Hills Park has the highest number of reservations by our residents for the summer so far. We are at 21 for Bissell Hills Park reservations, St. Seer Park. There are 14 reservations in Tanglewood Park. There are nine resident reservations and seven non-resident reservations. Tanglewood is the only park non-residents can make a reservation at, and that's because it is technically a St. Louis County park. We have a 50-year lease for the park added, and I believe the lease is for a dollar. We have to maintain it though. As you can imagine, our revenue at the Recreation Center has decreased for this year. According to our figures, we are down like $75,000. But we are trying to come back, and that's why we need everyone to come back. Hopefully by January, we'll be able to really get going again with our swim lessons. But right now, we have adult water aerobics classes, we have slide classes, we have chair aerobics. We also accept Soviet sneakers and Renew Active, if anyone is interested in that, just give us a call. We can give you more information about that. Right now, the only other thing I'd like to say is that we are actively looking for a director. Hopefully, we will have a person in that position by the end of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Amy. Proceeding on our agenda, we have next the Street Department, Mark Sanders. Can you hear me?
I'm trying to see.
Thank you, Amy. Next on our agenda, we have the Street Department, Mark Sanders.
I guess he's not here at all.
He's on, apparently he's muted. He's trying to talk.
I don't see him.
I see him. He's gone.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see his, I don't see the muted sign on his face, but make sure he's not muted.
Right, I pressed unmute all.
Mark, can you hear us? Okay, you're shaking your head. That means you can hear us.
You can't see him? I can't see him. Okay. Oh, there he is.
Mark, are you talking?
Yeah, he's talking, but we can't hear him. Okay.
Well, perhaps then we should proceed to our city engineer.
All right.
Clayton Klein, and then we'll come back to Mark Sanders. Clayton, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, everybody. Clayton Klein, City Engineer. And I want to tell you a little bit about what we do. I don't want to take all of Joe Raben's thunder in this report, but I'm here to help protect the property in Belle Fountain Neighbors. I review any drawings or projects that come in to make sure that they meet our zoning requirements, that it's a fit for the area. I check to make sure that they follow. Currently, we are under the 2009 IVC, but we're looking to, within the next few months, change out to the 2015 IVC. I look at the construction of the project and also the mechanical HVAC part of it. Then we tell whoever's giving, submitting those projects that they have to contract with St. Louis County, who reviews the plumbing and electrical. With that being said, we're here to help everybody. We're not here as the big bad guys trying to find something wrong. We're here to help you, the homeowners, with your building. So if you're going to be doing any type of work, please contact City Hall, and we can help you out to let you know, first of all, if you need a permit, and also how to make sure that you're getting the right work done for your project, to make sure that you get a good contractor that will do the work in a proper way so that it is safe for you. That increases the value of your property as you do it. It's a big task, and I work with Joe Raben, Kelsey Holmes, and Judy Manich. So if you can imagine, basically, four people handling, there's over around 4,500 residences, and there's about 100 commercial addresses. So we're kept busy, and if you ever have any questions or comments, please call, and we will look into how we can help you with it, be it if, like, right now, I know MSD is working on Coburg Drive. We're watching as it goes along, but if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call. We can help you out. With that being said, I don't have anything else unless anybody wants to ask me anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you, can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, I can. That's Mark Sanders.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. My name is Mark Sanders, Street Department Foreman. Well, y'all know, we had a rough year. We had a lot of storms. Had a lot of storms, a lot of trees down. We've been battling them. My guy's been working very hard. We were kind of getting behind on the asphalt, but we're back on the asphalt, and we're going to stay on the asphalt and then try and get as many holes as we can before it gets too cold out. And then we're going to go back on trees come winter. So all the people that called in with these trees, which is quite a few every day, we will get to them. We built a new salt shed this year. Right now, it is completely filled with salt, so we got plenty of salt for the winter, whatever Mother Nature brings at us. And we're just going to keep chugging on, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
But you resolved those technical issues.
I did. I had to get help.
But you did. Thank you.
I got it.
We'll move on then. The next person we have up is our Building Department, Joe Raben.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, good evening, everyone. As Clayton just kind of talked with you about, we've had a very busy year at the Building Department. City Hall was closed due to COVID, unfortunately, as everybody knows, but the Building Department has stayed open the entire time. We've remained open and have done inspections. We had to change our procedures a bit during that time. Without City Hall being open, we have made all of our permits available online for everyone so that we can try to be more virtual and assist people with having their permits and things reviewed without being in contact as much. So those things have all been online through the COVID situation and have been heavily used. We have been doing, we have been tracking all of our occupancy permits that we have not been able to do in person. We've been tracking those, and we've been catching back up with those since City Hall is open. We are back up to having all those caught up, and we're back to even again. So we have caught back up to where we were prior to all the COVID situation. As Clayton said, we do have a lot of homes in the, about 4,500 homes in the city that we do look at. If you don't know much about the Building Department, we do do all inspections for construction permits that are issued. We review all the drawings that are submitted to us for the different projects around the city. We also address any property maintenance issues and complaints for the city. So feel free to contact us at the Building Department for any issues that you might have. We will follow up on those and help get those remedied. Pretty much the extent of my report.
Thank you, Joe. Coming up on our agenda, we have a number of public officials who've been gracious enough to share time with us this evening, and we are certainly most appreciative of that. First, we have our Riverview Fire Chief, Keith Goldstein.
Chief Goldstein couldn't attend this evening because he had a prayer commitment.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move right along then. We are very pleased to have with us County Councilwoman for District 1, Rida Daye.
You're muted.
Thank you very, very much for the invitation. Good evening to all of you. It is challenging right now to have our meetings this way. It is challenging right now to have our meetings this way. We're doing this same technological effort in St. Louis County. Our meetings are on WebEx, so it's a little different, it's a little distant, but you know, this will pass, this will pass, and then we'll be able to get back to meeting with each other. We'll be able to give hugs and handshakes and that kind of thing, and I am so looking forward to that. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this evening about some of the things that are happening in St. Louis County. I came on a little early, so I did hear your resolution about the CARES Act funding and the 47 million that has been allocated for the municipalities. I know that Core Faith Walker is also on here, I won't take too much of her thunder, but that is an allocation that has been designated for the municipalities through an application process, is my understanding at this point, and that they will be having a webinar, I believe it's tomorrow, to give specific instructions as to how you do that, how you go about getting reimbursed for some of the things that you've already spent regarding the COVID situation. So I hope you and Mayor and Fran will, you know, and other council members will participate in that process, because I think the more people you get there, you know, everybody may not catch everything, but somebody will catch something. And so I think it would be very beneficial for as many of you to come as possible or to view that webinar as possible. I also wanted to say that during this devastating pandemic, it has been mentioned, but it is absolutely decimating our communities in the numbers of, that we have had, the numbers of positive tests that we have had, and of course, the number of fatalities that had happened. They are absolutely targeted in the North County area, and there are many schools of thought on why that is. Many of them, many of the professionals feel that, you know, we have a lot of underlying issues that contribute to this fatality, obesity, we have a high incidence of hypertension, have a high incidence of cholesterol issues. Those kinds of things also exacerbate how COVID affects you. So I say that to say that we have to get our folks under primary care services. We have to do that for our own people, they need to be so that they can control some of these issues that they have. We did, we were very fortunate, it was closer than I thought, but we did have the Medicaid expansion that took place at the last election. And so I think that will help a lot of people to access primary care facilities and doctors that we sorely need in this community. So it is incumbent upon all of us to do that kind of outreach to make sure that our people have the appropriate healthcare that's possible. Several of you all have mentioned things about the census, we know that that deadline is at the end of the month. It is a household census, so individuals don't have to do that, but it is a household census. Whoever lives in your household, you can count those people. I had one lady that said, well, I'm living, you know, I'm living with my mother right now, and so I won't be counted. That's not true, you will be counted in that household as a person. So everybody needs to take an opportunity to make sure that you are counted. The mayor and others have said that this is how we get federal dollars, and if we don't participate in that process, we cannot complain when we don't get the road construction for the federal government and other things that the federal government offers, and we're not, and we're not getting those. That's simply because we don't have enough skin in the game to make that kind of allocation. So it is extremely important to do that. So if you haven't done it, by the end of September, please take care of that, all right? We have, coming up in November, a very serious election, we know that. We know that a lot is on the line for this election. There's a lot of confusion about how the absentee ballot and the balloting will take place, the counting. If you are a senior, you should have received already your application for an absentee ballot, and you should have gotten that in March for the next three elections that were coming up. If you did not, you need to contact City Hall so they can let the folks at the Election Authority know that you wish to vote absentee and to send you the appropriate paperwork in order for you to do that. Let's not wait till the last minute, we have already had, heard about challenges with the postal services and how we're going to get that information, you know, to the election board. If you can possibly fill it out and have someone to drive you in to do that, you can also vote that way. But it is incumbent upon everybody, as soon as you get that, to make sure that you, if you're mailing it, if you, to make sure that if you're mailing it, that you mail it in plenty of time. I just received a post, a postcard from the post office saying you need to allow at least 10 days before the election to deposit that ballot in that mail. So let's, let's make sure that we have excellent representation from our community in this, in this next election coming up. We do have our meetings on WebEx, I started to say Zoom, but it's on WebEx, and you can access that through our, through our website. I believe on the day of the meeting, it's only audio, but the next day, I believe you can see the actual meeting itself. So again, keeping up with your county government, keeping up with what is going on, it is imperative that you be a participant in that. With this COVID, we know that our sales tax revenue is down almost 50% across the board. And so we're going to have to work on how we can get these things back. I heard your recreation, Amy, I believe, mentioned the fact that, you know, the revenue is down for that center. We have to, we have to make sure that we start participating in the process again, and whenever you can, you know, and safely going out. I do believe in wearing the mask, I do believe in staying socially distant if you possibly can, but if you can get out to support some of the venues, some of our small businesses are really, really hurting right now, and they need our patronage in order to survive. So that's another thing that I really wanted to make sure that you were aware of. The last thing, and I know that you have Councilwoman Gray coming after me, and I don't want to take, I don't want to do everything. The last thing I want to say is that as we move in this environment with this COVID, folks, it is essential that we take care of our mental health. We have to understand, this is not normal, it is not normal not to talk to people. It is not normal not to hug people, and it is not normal. And so people are really having a lot of challenges with this. I'm not sure if your, your police captain has, you know, has experienced any of this, but we are having a lot of mental health issues, a lot of domestic violence issues, because people are cooped up together like they've never been before, and this is a very, very trying time. So take the opportunity to look at your neighbor, call your neighbor, wave across the street, make sure everything is okay, because, you know, we don't want to lose people unnecessarily during this time. But I just want to implore on you to take time out to check on your neighbors, check on the seniors. You know, because we all need, we all need that checking up every now and then. And so it's not going to go, you know, too far out of your way to just, you know, just, just give them a call every now and then. Your city, again, is based in wards, so it's not an overwhelming, you know, task to reach out, but do, do your level, level best if you can possibly do that. I want to leave you with my phone number, it's area code 314-615-5438. My able assistant is Courtney Curtis. Courtney and I work very well together, I know we probably talk five and six and seven times a day about what is going on with the county, what can we do, any initiatives that we can do. So we are in tune to you, if you don't get me, you're going to get him first. But I am aware of what he does and how he does it, and I am very pleased to have him as my assistant. And if you have any problems with him, you give me a call, all right? But I'm sure that that will not happen. But please, ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure and honor to be here. I see that you have almost 50 non-video participants. This is phenomenal for a town hall meeting, and I do congratulate you on your outreach to the citizens that you serve. Again, we are public servants, it is not about us, it's about the people that we serve. So with that, thank you so very, very much for having me, good luck, thank you.
And thank you so much, Councilwoman Daye, most appreciated. We are also pleased to have with us this evening County Councilwoman for District Four, Rochelle Walton Gray.
Good evening, everyone, glad to be here. My very able colleagues, I almost said Senator, Senator Councilwoman, Rida Daye did a great job. So I don't, as she said, I don't have a lot to say, but glad to be here. And like she said, if you need anything, just give us a call, my number is 314-615-0393. And like she, again, as she mentioned, my assistant, she gets those calls. Actually, if you can send an email to RGray, R-G-R-A-Y at StLouisCode.com, and I will get your email and forward it to her as needed. Moving right along, and I won't talk too long. I'm actually also a committee person, so I was on a, trying to have two meetings at one time. But in that meeting, I was learned that we will have signs for those, oops, forgot who I'm talking to, never mind. But if you need, if you need anything from me on my committee person side, please let me know that as well. And you have to call my cell phone number, and I'll put it in the chat. The bridge, the Halls Ferry Bridge, we got notification that that will be complete next week, no later than the following week. They are very excited about the entire project. I was told it's been about 10 years since they had a multimillion dollar project similar to what they're doing here in North County. So we need to be proud of that, and we appreciate Mo Dot for getting those federal funds to complete that project. And you can see it's a lot going on. I talked about that outer road, and I believe the outer road has a little trail. So you can walk now, you don't have to drive everywhere you go if you want to, you can walk down the trail on the outer road, at least over by Elizabeth. That was important. I mentioned the last time I was at one of the town hall meetings, I talked about Shot Spotter. And as we know, that is not a preventative measure, but it is something that we talked about last time. And I know there were a lot of questions about Shot Spotters, I wanted to mention it. And again, give us a call or send an email if you have need information about how that works. We are, we did get a new chief at the North County precinct. He is really not very familiar with North County, so he's really had to get acclimated to the area. But I've talked to him about the neighborhood policing and things like that. Of course, you all have your own police department, but I'm sure you guys work hand in hand with North County sometimes. So I wanted to mention that. The library, the library has been having food distributions all summer, actually, probably since April. They distribute food on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Used to be 10 to noon, but I believe they start at 9:30 now, 9:00 or 9:30 a.m. They took a break, and they are getting back started again this week. So they will be there tomorrow. And I used to volunteer on Fridays to help distribute diapers there, but the diaper distribution is no longer active, but you can call the diaper bank if you need diapers. There's not a problem, they will still get you diapers. Councilwoman Daye's mentioned the underlying issues that plague our community, the African-American community primarily, disadvantaged communities because of our underlying health issues. The administrator for Christian Hospital, he is on one of the, the committees that, advisory committees that is helping with the CARES Act funding, helping getting those funds out. And he's very aware, actually, he contacted me when he was implementing the testing site, and he also wanted to discuss these underlying issues that plague our community, and he's going to try to do something about that. We're going to work together along with some of those other areas, such as yours, that need that type of assistance. Economic development, that's another major issue in our area. I heard the mayor speak about, speak earlier about a plan that he has. If we can work with economic development to get more done in the area outside of Belle Fountain, because as I told you, if your city is up to par and your surrounding area needs assistance, it's not doing, it's not going to help you get a lot of new residents if your whole, if the outline areas are not doing as well, and he agreed. So our mayors, we all need to work together to see what we can do about economic development, because that does go through a whole totally different department. But I have been very much engaged in trying to get something done, if at all possible. Of course, I know most of you are concerned about the mall. But again, that's, that's under the Port Authority, and they are working on it, they have RFP out. But there's, that's a long story, but we haven't gotten a lot of people, maybe one or two, to apply for the RFP, or respond to the RFP, that is. Trying to make sure, just to go back. Continue to wear a mask, practice social distancing, things like that, very, very important. I know our families want to get together during holidays and birthdays, but this is really not the time for that. You know, you want to see your mom, of course, things like that, you're very, very, very close relatives. But as far as having big gatherings for those type of events, that is highly, we highly suggest that you don't do that. Again, speaking with Rick Stevens, there was a spike in cases after every holiday, Mother's Day, the Fourth of July, and Memorial Day. There was always a spike in cases after every holiday, because people are still trying to gather with one another. We wear a mask with them, you notice people pull them down the entire time, it's just hanging on their neck, not doing any good. It is our younger relatives, deces, nephews, grandchildren, who are making our older relatives sick and giving them, calling them to catch the virus, get the virus. So just be cautious of that. I don't know how long I've been speaking, but I just want to end with, I thank you again. I worked very, very well, actually, with several of your older persons, some I knew prior to my being elected, and some prior to their being elected. So I worked very well with several of your older people. So if you can't find me, if somebody can find my number, ask, ask your older person, they can get in touch with me. So thank you again for having me, can't wait to hear what Core, what Core Faith has to say. She'll have some good information for you as well. So have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walton Gray. And now we have State Senator Gina Wall.
City Attorney, I don't think she's here.
Thank you, Fran. Then we will move along, there's a familiar name on the list coming up. State Representative for District 66, Tommy Pearson Jr.
Thank you, Attorney White Coleman. And to all of the elected officials, the mayor, older persons, and everyone on the call. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to come on and share with you some of the things that are going on at the state level. I will try not to be repetitive beyond putting an emphasis on the census, which is, of course, very important, as was stated, and also to be an educated voter. and also to be an educated voter as we enter the general election in November. Those two things are very important. Now, um, Councilwoman Daze talked about getting used to having most of her meetings via this medium, uh Zoom and Webex and the like. But my colleagues see fit for us all to gather together in Jefferson City, uh and that's where we were on yesterday as we concluded uh both our veto session as well as our special session. And so the veto session, ultimately, there were zero veto overrides this particular session. Uh, that is not a surprise, especially with the current makeup of the legislature, uh along with um the, the current governor. In an election year, uh there, there was um in the, in the House, in the Missouri House, uh a line item veto that was voted on by the House that ultimately was not picked up by the Senate. And that would have been to reimburse certain small businesses and small business owners uh as they prevailed in a tax dispute. But as that money was uh vetoed, then they will have to wait to get whatever reparation they had from uh, from that litigation. So ultimately, there was zero veto overrides. And you've likely also heard much about uh the special session. Uh, this was a special session that started uh before the primary election. It is now, it lasted about fifty-one days, two hundred thousand dollars uh in expense uh to get very little done. So the two items that got done of the seven that were proposed, uh one was to lift the residency, the city of Saint Louis's residency requirement for their police officers, which they were actually, which would preempt what they were going to vote on in November. So that did get passed uh along with House Bill sixty-six, which created a dedicated account in the state treasury for a Witness Protection Services Fund. Uh, however, there were no dollars appropriated to that fund. So it is just a fund with no money. So again, unfortunately, uh it was not time well spent uh for this particular special session. Let me uh just say a word before I close as it relates to the Saint Louis Welcome Center uh that is located at I two seventy in Riverview. Perhaps you have seen in the news where that is slated to close uh due to um budget cuts in the tourism, the Division of Tourism. That will be closing on October thirty-first, and there are two full-time employees that are there. They're working hard to get those employees placed elsewhere. Uh, there are two other welcome centers in the state that will be closing as well, one in Hannibal, the other in Kansas City. Uh, and so while that particular welcome center is not located within Belle Fountain Neighbors proper, it is very close. Uh, and I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And so now, in talking with the Office of Administration, they will continue to manage and maintain that property until a, a plan is developed as to uh what to do with that particular piece of property. Um, and so I wanted to make you again aware of that as we look to see what perhaps can uh occupy that particular location. So I will put my information in the chat box uh for you all. You have until December to, to communicate with me. But it's been a pleasure to serve as your, as your representative, and I again appreciate uh this opportunity to be with you uh this evening. So thank you.
And thank you, Representative Pearson. Uh, we will proceed to our next speaker, Director of Policy for Saint Louis County, Cor Faith Walker.
Hello, good evening. Want to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Um, so uh, good evening, I'm Mayor Pearson, members of the board, and all distinguished guests, as Attorney White Coleman just stated. My name is Cor Faith Walker, and I am the new Chief Policy Officer now for Saint Louis County Executive, Dr. Sam Page. Um, and I really do just want to thank you all for inviting me and having me here tonight. It's great to see so many familiar faces, including my um former partner in justice and colleague in the Missouri Legislature, Representative Pearson. And I really also recognize that I'm the last sort of a, a thing standing between y'all and, I guess, Wesley and some final questions before we wrap up. So I'm gonna be, I'm gonna try to be very quick, but wanted to give you a couple of um updates that I think uh are pertinent, um and a couple of things that have actually already been brought up tonight. So uh the first thing is the census, it's already been stated. Uh, the deadline is uh coming up on September thirtieth. But um as you all know, we are trying to deal with the census and get our responses back in the middle of a pandemic and um, and, and under an administration that has actively shown hostility towards uh people of color being represented and counted. And so um, you know, despite the sort of challenges and external pressures, it, I think we have to really emphasize just how important it is uh to get folks signed up for the census. Um, as part of my role as the Chief Policy Officer um for the county executive, um I lead our public policy and external affairs team. That includes our Director of Community Engagement, Ethel Bynum, who has been heading up the county's uh census uh efforts and complete count efforts from the county executive's office. And uh she has kept me abreast of the uh response rates that have um, that have been tracked for the census um in Saint Louis County and both nationally. Um, while nationally, the response rate's about sixty-five percent. Um, in the state of Missouri, it's about sixty-five percent. In the city, it's a little over um fifty percent. In Saint Louis County, um it's seventy, it's about seventy-four point eight percent, so about seventy-five percent response rate, uh self-response rate in Saint Louis County. And um, you know, I think, I know that a big part of that is, is thanks to you and many of the folks that are on uh this call, many of the elected officials who are um members of the Complete Count Committee and have been really getting the word out about the importance of um filling out that census. So I really do just want to thank everyone for, for all of those efforts and um the work that you're doing to really uh get the word out. That said, seventy-five percent is not one hundred percent. And um twenty-five percent makes a whole lot of difference. Uh Senator Day, well, once a Senator, always a Senator, I'm sorry. So Senator Daze uh mentioned um earlier about uh how important it is for bringing federal resources back into um the community, how it's important for road projects, infrastructure, those sorts of things. But um we actually have a really, really timely example of why uh filling out the census is so important. And that is what Mayor Pearson mentioned earlier. Um, the municipal relief program, which is part of the CARES Act, and the fact that the distributions and the allocations that are gonna be, that are gonna be coming to uh, you know, your, your town and your community are because of the, the population. It's based on the number of people that were counted in the two thousand and ten census. That is what the allocation is based on. So if we don't have twenty-five percent of people participating, that equates to about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from the three quarters of a million dollars that um, that, that Belle Fountain Neighbors is, is allocated to receive. And so that's just, I think, you know, I can't think of a better, more perfect and more timely example of just why it's important. And so um I really just want to reiterate uh getting that word out and really encouraging people to, to, to fill it out. Um, you know, you can do it online, understanding and recognizing what's going on with COVID. Um, and, and, but it's, it's really, really important. Um, that takes me to my next point, uh just about the municipal relief program that um, that Mayor Pearson mentioned earlier today, or earlier in this call. Um, the county executive announced on Tuesday the program and rolled the program out. And as Mayor Pearson stated, uh Belle Fountain Neighbors is uh slated to receive about three quarters of a million dollars, uh seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and we will be hosting a webinar tomorrow at one o'clock. Um, uh Mayor Pearson and a couple of folks within the, within your government should have received information about uh how to log onto that webinar. Um, really tomorrow is just gonna be a launch and an overview of the entire program and, and the structure of the program. Um, but then beginning this Tuesday, uh September twenty-second, and every Tuesday thereafter for the remainder of the program, from one o'clock to two o'clock, we will be having online webinars and office hours so that people can come on and ask questions. Um, you know, get, get answers to their questions, get feedback, and really get um the assistance, technical assistance that's needed to make sure that you all are able to avail yourselves of, of the funds that are, that are available and the resources that are available. And um I really do want to thank both Senator Daze and uh Councilwoman Gray for their work and their um, their feedback and the development of that program. One of the things that Senator Daze uh mentioned or really emphasized was the importance of providing technical assistance to municipalities so that you can get the funds that um, that, that are available. And so that's something that we really are trying to emphasize and prioritize. And so um again, we've got the launched webinar that's gonna be tomorrow at one o'clock from one to two, and then beginning on Tuesday, and every Tuesday thereafter, we will be having um office hours from one o'clock to two o'clock uh to provide technical assistance and support. Um, towards, or to that end, um as much as I enjoy talking about and, and dreaming about CARES and, and how much it has uh taken over my life recently, uh we actually do have a dedicated program manager for this specific municipal relief program, because, you know, we recognize the importance of it. And um, you know, based on lessons learned from uh previous program rollouts for the CARES Act, um, you know, we really understand that there needs to be somebody that is dedicated to this. And so I wanted to just share that person's name with you all, that's Joan Horn, uh the former Congresswoman, Joan Telly Horn. She um was brought on this week uh to be the program manager for the CARES Act uh, or for the municipal relief program. And her phone number is, and I'll be sure to put it in the chat box, but if folks have their pens out, um it's three one four six one five seven seven eight seven. Um, finally, uh just in, in the interest of time, I know that there are probably a lot of um other questions and just um, just folks wanting to know about what might be happening or what's going on with the overall CARES funding and the county's response. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that uh this upcoming Tuesday, um again, uh September twenty-second, at ten o'clock AM, there is going to be the Oversight, the Oversight Committee hearing. Um, both Senator Daze and Councilwoman Gray are members of that Oversight Committee. Um, and I can assure you, they ask um all of the very relevant and, and, and tough questions, but um it's also a great opportunity um and, and a place for you all to get updated about what's going on with the overall CARES Act and the county's response. So again, just thank you all so much for having me this evening, and um I look forward to speaking with you all uh in the coming days. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Well, we have now come to the end of our agenda. Uh, and last, uh but certainly not least, we have County Prosecutor Wesley Bill.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say, everyone. And, and I literally am standing in between you all and, and closing statements, so I, I, I'll try to make it quick. Um, first, I want to thank Mayor Pearson as well as the distinguished uh board uh for inviting, inviting us all to, to be here and speak, and for all the hard work that you do. And then I'm, I'm also, as a former city attorney, I'm gonna shout out the city attorney as well, uh Ms. White Coleman, 'cause I'm not speaking for her, but I'm just saying, in my experience, we gotta deal with all the different personalities on that board, and that makes that a tough job. But I know she wouldn't say that, so I'll say it for, but anyway, um, no, but seriously, I, I do appreciate the workup. And so I'll do a quick overview of some of the things that we have going on. Um, um, one, the first thing that, one of the first things that we did of, upon coming into office was restructuring the office that, that was more in line with our values. So for example, when we came, when I came into office, what I noticed is that um with homicides, for example, they were just being evenly distributed around all, around to all of the different attorneys. And the problem with that is, when I talk to families who have lost a loved one, one of the first thing, the things that they want to know is, what's the experience, what kind of experiences the attorney have? And so what we did was, we created a homicide and major crimes unit so that we could have our most experienced attorneys dealing with the most serious cases. Um, we also created our domestic violence team. And prior to our, us coming in office, that, the, the people that worked domestic violences, the, the domestic violence cases, excuse me, worked all different types of felonies. And so it's hard to develop an, an expertise when you have to do all different types of, of cases. And those are such specialized cases that we made that a dedicated unit so that we could get individuals who not only wanted to be there, but knew what they were doing with those types of cases, because they are sensitive cases and, and also, and, and oftentimes um very complex in the dynamics of them. Um, and, and one of the things that we're really proud of is our diversion team. What we recognize is that a lot of low-level nonviolent offenders who just need help, they need treatment, they need mental health care, they need access to jobs, education, were being put in our jails, and they were filling our jails up. And what we found is that jail was not helping these individuals. As a matter of fact, it was increasing the likelihood that they would come back on another offense. And so with the diversion cases, we looked at those low-level nonviolent offenders, not the serious or, serious or violence, violence stuff, that's a different ballgame, but those low-level offenders, and we put them on a pathway to recovery and, and, and to help address the root causes of, of their, of whatever issues that they were dealing with. And as a result of working, uh not just with our, in, uh with our team and our internal policy, but also gotta say with the judiciary, the county council, I'm, uh, Councilwoman Daze and Walden Greer on here. Uh, as from a team effort, we were able to get that jail population down to the lowest levels since the early two thousands. The average jail population in two thousand and eighteen was uh one thousand two hundred and three. The average jail population um, um now in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty has been eight hundred and twenty-seven. And I think what's key about that is that um the percentage of individuals and what they're in for, I think, is more compelling. CD and E felonies are, tend to be your low-level nonviolent offenses, tend to be. And so now, the CD and the people in, in the county jail on CD and E felonies are only at sixteen point eight percent. So that means eighty-five, about eighty-four to eighty-five percent of the individuals in the Justice Center are there for the serious and violent offenses. And we know that the Justice Center, that's a tough job, it's a challenging job. And so by, by getting the people who don't need to be there out of there, and the people who need to be in there are, are there, the, the, the staff that's there can focus on the people who actually need those resources. Um, and so I'm, I'm proud to be a part of the, the team, if you will, that's helped, uh, helped do that. But also, we're not just about diversion, we also understand that they're serious crimes. And that's why it was important for us to create that homicide and major crimes unit. We also have a dedicated uh, a general felonies unit uh that deals with, with those cases as well. And um, and, and one, and, and one last thing, um, and, and I know there's some questions, I don't know if they'll be for me or what have you, but one last thing is, we created a Chiefs Advisory Committee meeting, uh Advisory Committee, I should say. And that's an opportunity for us to meet not just the Saint Louis County, but the chiefs and the municipalities. Talk to them about the policies that we're doing, talk about the things that they're seeing from their vantage point that we could be doing better or that we're doing well, and make sure that that dialogue uh is ongoing with, with our law enforcement partners. Uh, and um, and as Chief Eyler can attest to, I've worked with him even prior to being county prosecutor. Uh, we also, we, we encourage that feedback. We don't see it as stepping on toes. Um, if a line prosecutor makes a decision that your chief or one of your uh commanders disagrees with, we encourage them to come to us and talk to us. And, and we've had several situations where a line warrant officer made a decision, and uh one of the chiefs or one of the leadership came to us, and we changed that decision because we agreed with them. And so um I think that open dialogue, that communication is important, because we don't have eyes on the ground like your uh department does and the citizens and council people. And so we want to make sure that, 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 that those lines are open. Um, I'll, and I'll just say this last, I want to reiterate some things that have been said, we gotta encourage people to, um, and, uh, sign up on the sentences and make sure that you're counted, make sure your family members are counted, and make sure your neighbors are counted, and then also wear a mask. If, if you are, if, for those who are, who are doubters, if you're right, then the worst thing, the worst, the worst thing is you have to have some cloth against your face. But if you're wrong, people get sick, people die, and we gotta look out for one another. So I think that's so important. And, um, and again, I want to thank you all for, um, having me as well as the several others on, on this call and, um, and, and we'll wrap it up, or at least from my end.
Thank you so much, County Prosecutor Bill. Uh, we have gotten a wealth of information from many sources. So now it's time to open the floor to the public for questions and answers. Mayor, I'll let you take over at this point. Mayor, you're muted.
I guess I'm muted, sir. I'm the one from the public who wishes to speak. I know we got one or two, three or four. I don't hear anyone.
Oh, this is Wanda Lane, Mayor. I, I was trying to decode this. Um, we've got lots of people on, on, on the, the call. I always speak, but I always have questions. Um, the one question, I have a question for the chief and I have a question for the, uh, city treasurer, if he's still online. Uh, chief, you wanted to hire, um, a new recruit a little while ago for the one vacancy we had, and you asked the board to approve some expenses related to that, to that hiring process. I don't remember what happened, uh, with that endeavor. And I know you said we had two vacancies. Um, if you fill those two vacancies, will that get the, the force up to one hundred percent? And what is the number for one hundred percent, um, vacant, um, one hundred percent, uh, entirely staffed for? Then the question that I have for the city attorney, um, I'm sorry, the city treasurer, I, I, the city, city finances are very important, and I really appreciate that you put on our website the different funds and a, kind of a generic explanation, but it was clear enough for us to understand, uh, what these funds mean and how those funds can be allocated. That was very helpful. Can you tell us just, if you have the information right now, are we operating in the red or the black? And, um, is there a reason we didn't get some kind of financial data at this meeting? Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. Patrick had to leave.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, uh, but we'll get to answer to your question.
Okay. Is the chief, it's very well, thank you.
I'm gladly still here, uh, to answer your questions in reverse. So, um, authorized as thirty-one police officers, including myself. Uh, last two budget cycles, this one and one previous, uh, we've suspended the, um, the filling of two vacancies, which brings us down to twenty-nine. Uh, right now, we have two vacancies, so we actually have twenty-seven officers, um, in-house, and we will be seeking to hire two. And as it concerns, um, sending a candidate to the police academy, I have approached the board in a previous meeting, uh, to which they have approved interest in sending somebody to the academy as long as that person can, uh, pass the hiring process, um, for the police department. And at that time, I will reintroduce that very subject to the board for approval to actually send that particular individual to the academy. That kind of answered your question?
Yes, sir. Well, well, may, I'm, may I follow up with just one? You said there were thirty-one authorized officers. We now have twenty-nine, and if you hire, I'm sorry, twenty-seven, and you hire tw- two is twenty-nine. So we're, so in other words, we're still not going to be fully staffed at the, the twenty-nine number. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, this is CJ from nine twenty-five St. Place. I had more of, not a question, but just a concern to areas of the citizen. So I've been in North County, I was born and raised in North County, and I've been in Belle Fountain for the last five years. I'm concerned about the trend of, uh, disinvestment that's going on in North County, both as, um, as a citizen and potential home buyer. I'm looking around, and the neighborhood that I grew up in is now rampant with crime, disinvestment, abandoned homes, um, a lack of community support, and there's a lack of transparency going on in North County, especially District Four. Me and a few of my cohorts were reading over the audit opinion of Bell Ridge, and we think that this might be just a trend of the small municipalities going on in North County, and we're concerned about that. So I just wanted to voice my concern as a citizen, because I know North County is a great place to live, I was born and raised there. And so I'm just, I don't want it to become, no shade to North City, but I don't want it to become like North City and having to rebound after thirty or forty years of disinvestment. So that was just it.
Thank you. And as the mayor, I don't either. Um, anyone else?
Yes, this is Kathy Maker, ten thirteen Downell Avenue. I want to say this is the best town hall meeting I've been to. The information that was given out was really great. Only thing I missed is my cookie.
She says her cookies.
Her cookie.
We have, when we was having a in-person meeting, there were coffee, cookies, and we can't have it now. I mean, unless you brought your own. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Clarence Wilson, uh, twelve sixty-six St. Eighty Road. I've just mainly got a comment, uh, in reference to the last meeting that I had the opportunity to listen in on. And I guess my major concern, like a lot of residents here in Belle Fountain, is, are the elected officials listening to what we're saying to them? It seems that sometimes we get a little bit off base when they have these meetings, and you're not listening to the residents. Now, we all want to have our properties up to par and be proud of our properties. But just like the inequities with, uh, enforcing the law against certain people, the same thing seems to be happening in our community as it pertains to, uh, how our properties are kept and, uh, who is held accountable for keeping up the property. We have a lot of properties that are vacant, and it seems to be a little bit of a challenge to hold those who are owners of those properties accountable for those properties. And I'm hoping that we can remedy that situation and hold these people who own these properties accountable for these properties. Uh, if there has to be ordinances to, uh, cause them to pay money on those properties when they are vacant, until they have someone in those properties. I know in, uh, the city of Northwoods, they do that, uh, when there's a property that's vacant, there's a, an assessment of a certain amount of money per month that that property is charged, whoever owns it, that charges this amount every month, until that property is occupied. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think it makes, uh, the property owner more accountable and more wanting to be accountable. And yes, I know it's a lot of paperwork and red tape and all these different things that go along with trying to find the owners of these properties. But also, those of us who are being responsible with our properties, we don't want to have to live next door to people who are not taking care of their property. Now, I've also heard a lot of times people mentioning about people who rent property, that they don't take care of the property because they're not invested in the property. Well, you know, that's really not an excuse either. Uh, we have ordinances and such that's supposed to help us to keep up our properties. I, I heard something, uh, said a little bit earlier by one of the officials saying that, we're there, we're here to try to help you take care of your property. And yet, I see a little bit of inequity, uh, when it comes to, uh, people being held accountable for upkeep and for doing things in the right way. And mainly, all of the citizens want, just like myself, and I'm sure a lot of you, just want to have things done in a fair and equitable way. And that's all we want. Uh, we're not asking for anything extra, we're not asking for anything but above what can be done, but we do want to have a safe environment. Um, and so this is one of the concerns that I have, along with some of the other residents that I've talked to, that it seems that the elected officials are not listening to what we're saying to them, and they're spending a little bit too much time going off on things that they think, uh, is important, which very well may be. But when you have those meetings and you have the residents chime in, they should be able to say to you what's concerning them, and you'd be able to answer them. So that's basically my comment.
Thank you, sir, and we appreciate it. Any, anyone else who would like to, uh, speak? Anyone else?
I have a comment, Mayor Pearson.
Okay.
Uh, this is Ebony Harfield, um, at six forty-five Gleason Drive. Um, I'm a five-year resident and a homeowner, um, and I would like to piggyback off my neighbors, I feel that I too have witnessed a downward spiral when it comes to, um, the image and beautification of the neighborhood, um, public safety issues, crime, so on and so forth. Um, and I feel that year after year, I've constantly complained about these issues to no avail, um, until finally, one day I decided that if I wasn't part of the solution, then I too was part of the problem as a citizen. Um, and I became civically engaged and, um, and active on my own, and, um, and I feel a lot more hopeful and optimistic about the change that's going to occur in Belle Fountain. Um, and I'm claiming it in advance, um, because I know what's happening behind the scenes, I am helping, I am involved. Um, so to all of my neighbors on this call at this point, um, obviously, you are engaged to a certain extent, and you care, you care enough to be here. Um, I know that we're, we're living in a digital age and a new time and an era where they have all of these challenges out here. Um, so I'd like to pose the get involved challenge, if you will. Um, I'd like to challenge all of our neighbors who care so much about this, this community that we live in, um, to, to get involved, get active, and use the same two hands that we use to point out what's wrong, to build, um, the neighborhood and the community that we want to see and make things better. Um, I know that we have, uh, a neighborhood cleanup coming up, I think that's a great opportunity to get involved, and we have the Public Safety Summit, um, coming up soon, we'll need volunteers for events like that. So to all of you out there, um, to all my neighbors, I care about you all, just, you know, just as much as you care about this community, I do as well. And I'd like to challenge every last one of you guys to do what you can, um, in your own way to get involved and make this community better.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. I have a question.
Right here.
Uh, yes, this is for the mayor. Okay, so, how is the CARES Act money gonna help the residents? And, um, will it help with rent or electricity, et cetera? And how do residents actually benefit from this?
Well, the, the residents benefit by, uh, uh, in, in ways of, uh, you know, the city's lost a lot of money during the pandemic, and the, and the CARES Act money is to replace some, uh, all of that. And so it does not go directly into the hand of the individuals, but through city services, uh, that's how you will benefit.
So basically, we'll benefit through services? What kind of services? Like you saying that it's just, this money is for you guys because you lost money? How will we, how would the residents benefit from this? Correct.
Well, you are, I mean, you're the ones that we spend the money on by keeping the rec center up, keeping the city hall up, providing police protection, providing street, uh, um, the street department potholes and, uh, also cutting grass and vacant, uh, and vacant homes and, and what have you, tree trimming and a whole host of other things. That's how you benefit.
Oh, okay. All righty.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I add here that, uh, I did hear her mention something about, uh, mortgage or utility assistance or something like that?
Yeah.
I, I thought I heard that. If, if she, um, can call, um, Cor Faith Walker, her number is here in the, um, in the chat box, because we did have a, a, a pot of money, uh, set aside for humanitarian efforts. And so some of that is with food, some of that is with shelter. So if she would give her a call tomorrow, uh, she can give her some specifics about that and see if she or whoever she's speaking about is eligible for that, those funds, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and also, as we move along in the, um, the process of, of obtaining this money, there'd be, um, uh, information coming from the county that will guide us in the use of that money as we get it. So, uh, it is not free-for-all money. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Pearson.
Um, oh, yes. Ishmael, let me, I'll go on and introduce yourself.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. Uh, I'm Ishmael Sistrunk, I'm the new Executive Director of Communications at Riverview Garden School District. And so Mayor Pearson, uh, you and I know each other from, uh, my previous tenure with RGSB, uh, so it's just great to be here. Um, one of our initiative, initiatives at Riverview Gardens is just to be better neighbors, uh, with Belle Fountain neighbors, with all of the municipalities. Uh, so I just wanted to be present for this meeting. I will put my contact information in the chat. I know there has been a lot of discussion about Riverview Garden School Districts and technology and, uh, the impact that COVID-nineteen is having on the school system. Uh, so I want to put my contact information out there in case anybody needs to reach us, and we just want to be great partners with Belle Fountain Neighbors, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself.
Congratulations, Ishmael.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good to see you again.
You as well.
I look forward to working with you again. Uh, we worked close when you were with the district before, and, uh, we will, uh, uh, rekindle that, that relationship and partnership.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Anyone else? All right.
Mayor, I have, Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, Ms. Stewart.
Okay, this is Jenny Stewart again. I just want to reiterate that Belle Fountain Neighbors, um, is sponsoring, the Image and Beautification Board, um, in conjunction with the city of Belle Fountain, is sponsoring a cleanup of several of our streets. I want to reiterate, you are, you that are on the phone, you are welcome to come and help us pick up litter on our streets on Saturday, September the twenty-sixth, from nine to one o'clock. Snacks will be served. If you are interested in helping, please call City Hall at eight six seven zero zero seven six, and let the operator know how many people will be volunteering, and we would appreciate it, because as you know, we have a lot of litter on our streets. And this is one way that our residents, our friends can get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Stewart, we appreciate you, we, we, uh, we recognize the great job that you do, and, uh, we- We, we, uh, we recognize the great job that you do, and, uh, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
With that, with that, we prop, well, we promised that this meeting would last two hours. And I think we're right on, we're one minute away from that. And so in closing, let me encourage each, well, let me thank all of our, um, county officials, elected officials for being here with us tonight. Uh, we appreciate all the information that you've given us, and, uh, and, and we'll do our best to take it and use it to our advantage. Uh, now, let me encourage you to vote. Make sure you register to vote. Make sure you take advantage of the, uh, early mailing, early voting, as some of our officials have shared with you tonight. Uh, do it and do it right away. Uh, we don't want to be left out, we don't want to be too late in doing and getting our, uh, voting information, uh, together. So thank you so much. Uh, we look forward to you all coming back again next year, uh, to share with us. And, uh, and I, and I, you heard the comments from one of our residents, saying because of you, this is one of the best, uh, town hall meetings that we've ever had. So we can't do anything but get better from this point. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And let's have a wonderful night and a prosperous rest of the year. Thank you, and, uh, is there a meeting, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's Alderman Thomas, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is that second?
Oh, the woman does, I second that.
Thank you, it's been moved and proper second, that we shall adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close as may, as have it, and the means adjourn. Have a safe, wonderful evening.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye. Have a blessed one. All right.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful.
Be sure to wear your mask.
That's good. You stay.
Stay safe.
Okay, I'm gonna click it off now.
All right, Clan, Fran.
What'd you call me, Clan?
No, 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 I said Fran.
Oh. All right, well, when I push in, we're gone, okay?
All right.
Here we go. Bye, everybody.